Yeah, I look at.
...I like to call it the awarding meeting of 2025.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Oh, spright. Almighty and ever gracious God, we give you thanks for this day and as we've gathered here tonight in this town meeting, Lord, we just seek your guidance, be with each and every one of us, and as there's questions asked, information shared, that we gain knowledge and would know the things that need attention. So God, just continue to be with all, each and every one of us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Alright, so welcome everybody. So tonight, my honor to be able to introduce the new town manager to the town of Greensboro. We are very excited to welcome Mrs. Joost to the town. We think that she will do a wonderful job for us. I would like to read a little bit of bio for those of you that may have not seen it in the newspaper or on the Facebook. So Mrs. Joost is a dedicated professional leader with thirty years of medical management, budget, and finance experience, five years as Director of Medical Staff Services, and two years as District Office Manager at the Maryland General Assembly with experience in grants, constituent services, and legislation. Throughout her career, Cindy has managed and budgeted high-volume practices and provided services, provided organizational and innovation to streamline processes, and wrote a Caroline County, I'm sorry, and wrote policies and procedures to comply with regulatory comments, requirements, mandatory terms. A Caroline County native, Cindy graduated from North Carolina High School and Kennedy Western University with a degree in business administration. She's married and has two grown children and two granddaughters. We are so looking forward to having her with the future of Greensboro. Congratulations and welcome aboard. Now, before I swear her in, I would like to let you know the process that we used to select the town manager. We received thirty-six applications through the process, and the council went through all thirty-six applications, and through those thirty-six, the council came up with five names that they would like to have interviewed. We had a panel of four people that conducted those interviews consisting of myself, Pete Berlioz, Jimmy Fowler, and Scott Getzel, who's the town manager of the town. The panel then suggested and recommended a council, a candidate to the council to be interviewed. The council then did conduct the interview with Mrs. Joost and did welcome her and offer her a job. And she was given a conditional job offer before we had to do the background investigation, which she did successfully complete, which consisted of checking out her driving record, credit history, criminal history, interviews with neighbors, verification of employment over the last fifteen years, a drug test, and contacted many personal records. So, having all that aside now, Cindy, if you come up front so I can swear you in. If you would please, you might, please, my hand and feet after me. I state your name. Do you swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States? And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to this state of Maryland? And support the Constitution and laws thereof? And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of Town Manager according to the Constitution and laws of the state. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
As I said, Cindy's only been here a week, but she has accomplished a lot. And I know that many of you in the audience have had the opportunity to speak with her, and I hope you were just as delighted to have her onboard as we are. So for the council, I'll be looking for the approval of minutes from the May fifteenth twenty-five meeting. I have a motion to accept the minutes on the May fifteenth meeting as written in your package. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are passed. I'm also looking for a motion to pass the minutes for the public hearing held on May the twenty-seventh, which is in your package.
I will make the motion to accept the meeting of minutes from the public hearing.
On May the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of signifying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, the minutes are passed. Alright, so we held our public hearing on the budget on May the twenty-seventh. And we received a couple of questions from the floor, so I'm gonna try to answer those questions. One of them was related to community support for fifty-nine thousand dollars. And I mistakenly thought when I was told that they were talking about the salary for that position, but in fact, it was for the money that we put forward for some community support. Why was community support not included in the salary? It is. Whoville is in the budget, but we heard that it's not happening. If it's not happening, what is the budget locked for? And no decision has been made. Car Show Music Fest, why is it increasing ten thousand dollars? The projected revenue increased ten thousand dollars, not the cost. And where did the savings of eight thousand five hundred dollars come from for internet expenses? And it came from savings from not having the internet set up at one thirteen South Main Street. The police department's salary has only increased by five thousand dollars, but we are budgeting for a third officer. The increase of the five thousand dollars was raised for those officers that are working here. Contractual internet fees for the PD increase. Is this because of them planning to move? No, there was no increase in that line item. Public Works needs two vehicles. Is this in the capital budget? There are no vehicles in this year's capital budget for Public Works. And it says the revenue for Public Works increased by thirty-seven thousand dollars. How did that happen? And there was additional funding from the highway usage. So, the council now has had a chance to review the proposed budget for the upcoming year of twenty-six. We've had our public hearing. We've had all of our workshops together. So I'm now prepared. We have a balanced budget in front of you, and I am prepared for somebody who is willing to introduce the budget for passage tonight for ordinance.
You'll need to unlock your iPhone first.
No, I don't. So this is ordinance twenty-five dash zero dash three. It was introduced by Commissioner Berlioz. In ordinance of the town of Greensboro adopting a general budget and enterprise budget for the fiscal year beginning of July the first, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And establishing a tax rate for the fiscal year in the amount of sixty-eight cents per one hundred dollars of assessed real value property, one point five one three per one hundred on all commercial or business personal property, and a dollar forty per one hundred dollars on public utilities. And to adopt the service charge on the second semi-annual tax payment and administrative fee adopted by Caroline County. So I will look for a motion to approve.
I will make the motion to approve ordinance zero, twenty twenty-five dash zero dash three.
Alright, and is there a second?
Second.
On behalf of first and the second to adopt the ordinance twenty-five oh dash three, which is the budget for the upcoming year and the taxes which I just read. All in favor? Excuse me, would you have caller roll please for me, Don?
Mr. Berlioz?
Yeah.
Mr. Harrison?
Yay.
Mr. Lewis?
Yay.
Mr. Robinson?
Yay.
Alright, so the ordinance and budget is thereby adopted. Thank you. Alright, so the next thing on the agenda is the MOU with Caroline County, and Leslie Grunden from the county is here tonight to entertain us and speak about.
Hello. Can you hear me? Better? Better? Even I hear me now. This is a draft memoranding of understanding between Caroline County and the town of Greensboro, Maryland for a grant project for your pump station. I'll give you a little background with some help from Brandon. Brandon contacted me spring of twenty twenty-three after a series of heavy rainfalls, concerned about some severe erosion that was happening at the main pump station location by that little stream that goes down into the Chop Bank River by the bridge. The bank was eroding, the stream bank was eroding and had dropped probably a few feet, washed away partly from erosion from the stream flow and partly from overland stormwater erosion. And he was concerned about how close the pump station was to the stream. So, and I agreed with him. We went out and looked at it, and it's within just a few feet now. So he asked for some help, looking for some grant funding to at least find a temporary solution to secure the site while we look for funding for a longer-term solution. We were able to get some funding from MDE to do a stone gabion wall along the stream bank to hold it in place, and then some upland stormwater, kind of breakwaters, to try and reduce the impact of the flow coming down at the plant and slow down how the erosion was eroding away the bank. And that, we got that in the summer of twenty twenty-three. Brandon and his crew put it in to hold it in place, and then we started looking for funding for a longer-term solution. We had two engineers working with us. One of them was the original engineer for the treatment plant project, who knew the site well, the main pump station site well. And everybody agreed that based on the rate of erosion that was happening, and also, I'm sure everybody remembers Hurricane Irene and the water level down there, that the best solution and the permanent solution should be to relocate the pump station out of the floodplain. So, the county put out some feelers to every agency we knew to see if there was any grant funding available for that kind of project, which would be relocation of the pump station uphill, so to speak, out of the floodplain. Also, some of that erosion was made worse because of the existing structures over there from the old plant. The rezed building and the player adjuster are still there. So we were looking for additional funding to take those down, to get them out of there. We heard back from MDE about a grant that was somewhat new from the EPA that was refunding for stormwater and sewer projects that were combined. And they felt that this would be a good fit. So we put together an application with the former town manager, Brandon. The engineers put together estimates for planning, design, permitting, construction management, inspection, and we submitted all that to MDE. This particular grant is, it's an EPA grant. The grant actually goes to MDE, and then the applicant for the project is actually a sub-recipient under MDE. So the grant goes to MDE, and then MDE awards it to the sub-recipient, which would be the town. The estimate for all of those components from planning through construction was about two point four million dollars. The grant is structured like a lot of MDE grants where it's a reimbursable grant, but you don't begin to get reimbursed until you have a construction contract, which means the jurisdiction applying for it has to cover the costs of planning, design, permitting, the RFP process, advertising for bids, and doesn't begin to get reimbursed until construction starts, which is a pretty big burden. So, both Brandon and the former town manager and the attorney were concerned about that burden on you all for what could be a year to eighteen months, which is understandable. So, you all essentially asked if the county would be able to help out and be the actual applicant on behalf of Greensboro and just manage the grant. This is just to administer the grant and be the applicant, handle the invoicing and the reporting on the grant, both to EPA and to MDE. And MDE, we said we would. The commissioner said that we understood the emergency and the luck in finding this funding, that this funding was available. So, both MDE and EPA agreed to that arrangement, but they requested that we put together an MOU between the town and the county that clearly outlines the county's responsibilities and the town's responsibilities. The county is administering the grant and running the invoicing through the county, but the town will be working with the engineers, making the decisions on design, making the decisions on construction, ultimately selecting bidders. The county is trying to take your info short. So that's what we've laid out in this draft MOU. For you all to take a look at, make any edits that you think are necessary. The town attorney did take a look at it, and the only edit she had was, I think the address for the town hall had changed because we had the old town hall address, but she felt it was sufficient. But we want you all to take a look at it, and also, if you have any questions about the project, we're happy to hear. I think the MOU is a great idea, honestly. As it stands now, this was awarded back in, it was last summer, end of last summer. So since last summer, and now everybody's heard about funding and EPA, and also the state funding issues. So it's been a little slow going through legal review, both at EPA and MDE. Everything that comes up through us goes to MDE. They run it through their review, send it back to us, and then they send it up to EPA, and then it goes through their review. So we, the county does not yet have an MOU from MDE. We expect it sometime by this summer. We're not gonna start anything pending your approval of this MOU until we have a signed grant agreement, and then the first step would be putting together the RFP. But if you all have any edits, and you don't have to give them to me this moment, take a look at it. You can send them to me, and then I'll forward them up to MDE because they'll need to review them, and then EPA can review.
So you don't need us to sign the MOU tonight, do we?
No, only get me edits because we're not, when we get to the, we're not signing anything until we have a signed MOU from, from MDE, and then we start.
Okay.
What's the projected timeframe on when this would even start if we were to, everything was to go through?
If MDE tomorrow sent us an MOU and approved this MOU, sent us a grant agreement and then approved this MOU, we've drafted the request for proposals package, and MDE has reviewed it and we're in the last stages of, this is for the design portion, so that we'd be ready to go as soon as they were ready to go. The RFP process, I'm not sure if it has to be thirty or sixty days. I think it's thirty days. Then you've gotta review all the proposals, and that would be with the town, the consulting engineer, select bidder, or select, you know, award the bid. Design is projected to take, I think it's six to eight, six to eight months. Six to eight months. Construction is eight to ten months. In between there, you've got permitting. This is in the floodplain, critical area. It's probably gonna need a waterways, wetlands and waterways permit, so permitting's gonna be fun. I would imagine a few months for that, to get all the approvals sent off on that. So right at that point, we're at a year and a half.
Two years.
Two years. Then, and then we're done. So call it a year and a half or two years.
So the grant you said was for what, two point four million?
Two point four five four million.
Okay, so.
Oh, and additionally, the demolition of the old treatment plant structures is included in the construction phase.
Right, but what I'm saying is, again, the bottom line, it says additional funding is needed to complete the project. The town is entirely responsible for securing that funding. So, like Pete just said, if you got overruns in two years where material costs goes up, and you're getting two point four five million, but now it's gonna be three point four five million, they're saying the town's responsible for that million dollars.
Right.
Is there gonna be grant funding to help offset that cost before?
There would be grant funding to apply for. Whether or not you could get it is another story. What I would say is, design will provide cost estimates. Between now and the end of design with tariffs and everything else, that's my concern also. If it jumps thirty or fifty percent, then what do we do? So, and we will talk about this if we get all of our paperwork. I think that's the first thing we talk about with you all is, design costs are covered. So, design is safe to proceed. Permitting is safe to proceed. Most of those permits are good for two years. I think a waterways permit is good for five, I think. So you get through the end of design, then you're in current day cost estimates. Take a look at what those are, and nobody, you don't have to go to construction immediately. I mean, if the funding isn't there, then you stop. You stop and you don't go to construction until you have the funding. And then we would help you all go back out and potentially, most likely to this grant program. It's an annual grant program. You actually benefited from two cycles because they hadn't funded anybody in the last cycle. Usually it's about a million, a little over a million dollars a year. So, we would likely go back to that source and apply for additional funding. And everybody would, you know, it's been a year now since we even got the grant award. So, it wouldn't be unusual to say, we're not, you know, we need to get additional funding because we're now two years later.
Right, because I know the cost is gonna go up in two years.
Oh, no, even if there weren't all kinds of issues, it would. So, it would probably be the best bet to do design, get current day at that time cost estimates, look at what the budget shows, and then make a decision then. The grant period for this, and because there's been such a delay in getting the final grant MOU approved, I think they're gonna extend it out, is right now June twenty twenty-eight. So that's, is the other thing. If we can get additional funding, if not from this grant, then from other either MDE or EPA grants, we'd still be able to finish within this grant deadline on this current grant. So, there'll be options, but we would recommend that everybody move slowly.
Now, that MOU, is that gonna hold us to, if something's coming up? We gotta change, we can change. I'd like to, I'd like to just talk, still talk a little.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, so to approve the MOU, is there a second? Hearing none, then the motion dies on the floor. So, thank you Pete for making that motion. Our next meeting that we would be able to sign this would be the second, our second meeting in July, or the third, the third meeting in July.
That's absolutely fine. Alright, I mean, this, this doesn't expire until the middle of twenty twenty-eight, and it's a big project. We had a thousand questions. I can't imagine you all wouldn't have a thousand questions, so.
So that date would work for you, is what I'm asking.
Oh, yes, absolutely, yes.
Alright, we'll make sure we put it on the agenda for that. Any other questions before?
You're free to, call me if you have any questions about any of it, okay?
Thank you.
You bet.
Department of Sports, Town Manager.
Can everybody hear me? Okay, for Public Works, we've got two grinder pump issues in Goldsboro. One needs to be retrofitted. Second one was clogged with wipes. The cut code grass, there were sixty-five codes last month.
It's not working. I'm just trying to hear.
Can't hear me? How about that? Can you hear me now? Okay, so the cut code grass, there were sixty-five codes last month. The muffin monster at East Lift Station was repaired. The BFPE was out today to do a yearly fire extinguisher maintenance. All mowers have safety lights installed, and they were done in-house. Hank and Brandon participated in yearly career day at Greensboro Elementary School, and meetings this past month were with Caroline County and the Kennaman Meadows. You all have any questions?
Do you need more folks, Brad?
No, we got some still in stock. We're, I think we got eight, six or eight that are still.
You know the five works, bro.
Okay, Greensboro Police Department stats. I think everybody got those. You want me to read them off? Or you guys have any questions?
The public got a copy of the statute, what they may have able to. Alright, anybody have any questions?
I do.
Alright.
The only question I did have was, where are we at with the traffic camera?
Traffic camera.
School.
So the speed camera has been approved. They actually began on the southbound side. They ran the conduit and the pole for the speed camera, so that is coming. We posted it within thirty days of anticipation of them being installed. It might be a little bit longer, however, we had to give the public a thirty-day notice. So it could be June twentieth or as early, or as late as the first of July. But per the code, we had to give at least thirty days notice to the public of them being installed.
Yes, it will be ready, up and running for summer school.
Yes, it will be up and running for summer school. That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the town manager? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to the next item, we're going to, under Old Business, we're talking about the relocation of the Greensboro Historical Society. As most of you know, we've had several discussions about that, and there was a lot of people in the community that wanted another opportunity to give their thoughts and comments to the council. So we are having a public hearing on the relocation for the Historical Society tonight. Those of you wishing to speak can come up to the podium, and you have three minutes to speak. It's not a question and answer, it's just a time for you to give us your thoughts on it. So if anybody is here that wants to make a public comment on the relocation of the Greensboro Historical Society, we'll let you come up now. See one hand raised back there, so you go first, sir. And when you get up, if you would state your name, please, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Vaughn Moser. I'm the vice president.
Would you like to say, Alan, you can have the mic. I mean, I see you have a cape.
No, 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 neither place. So, my name's Vaughn Moser. I'm the vice president of the Greensboro Historical Society. I'm the acting president of the Greensboro Historical Society as well. And first of all, I just wanted to thank you for everything you guys have done. You've been more than gracious and benevolent over, I think, seven years?
Six.
Six years? Okay, I wasn't involved back then, but, and everything you've done. And it really meant a lot to us, and we do appreciate it. We do understand the need for the building and so forth. We're already have, working through plans on moving out and stuff, because we know basically the space is needed, and the community does come first and stuff. The only thing I would ask is that you give us no less than ninety days to get ourselves out. I would also like to request that we have some systems from you in regards to helping to move that as well, you know, to help us with the move of the items as well. If you have any resources available to us that we could, we could do that as well. Maybe like your, your, shoot, I can't think of.
Borrow board.
Borrow board, you know, like even if it's like to borrow a truck or something, or maybe you have some people, and I know you would have people that would probably volunteer to help anyway, so that would be, that would be awesome for us as well to do that. There's some other items that I like to discuss, but I think that's really for us and the town manager. And congratulations. I don't think there are. And congratulations, I don't think there are items that need to be discussed at the, in the public setting and stuff. These are really, I know things that I'd like to discuss with you for the town as we move forward and stuff. But the 90 days would give us enough time to actually complete our due diligence. We have it narrowed down from five relocation areas down to two. And we actually have a committee that's going out to look at one. We are going to have to do work on the building and stuff, though, so that's why I'm asking for a little bit of time. And I think 90 days, so would you agree 90 days would be...
No, I need to 120. I always ask for a lot.
Okay, yeah, so I'm thinking at least until after Labor, you know.
We'll give you 90.
But we're looking at Labor Day, you know, and that kind of area and stuff. So we're hoping to like have those meetings and to devaluation of the building and so forth as well. So just to make sure that, you know, where we need to be and stuff. So, but it is a costly move for us. We're limited on our funds, just like, you know, you are as well too. That's why the sweat equity in regards to adding new systems by the town's help of the move would actually be very beneficial to us as opposed to throwing money at us or something like that, so...
I don't know what the council has to say. I, I think that we probably, as much as we want to help you with our, our vehicles and equipment and people, I think we need to talk to our lawyer to see if we need to have a liability release signed by you in event that there's something is damaged in the move. You know, we don't want to be liable and have to pay for, you know, historic items that who knows the kind of value it's going to be attached to.
That's more than acceptable. I mean, would you agree, I mean, I think that's, you know, you've got to cover yourselves and you've got to cover ourselves, so... And I think that that's most important, and I would just leave you with this. And for those of you who don't know, my wife and I, we own Castle Hall in Goldsboro and stuff. And of course, we don't have a Historical Society, and that's why we're members of the Greensboro Historical Society. But I think it's really important for everybody to understand is it's not the responsibility of somebody from out of state to come in and save your history. It's the responsibility of your community to do that. And that's really important because...
Well, I hate to interrupt you, but your, your three minutes is up, and so if somebody else that wants to talk...
That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you.
But it is important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll schedule a meeting with you. And congratulations.
So is there anybody else that wishes to speak, Mr. Bill?
I'd like to just reiterate what Bob said. We're grateful for the place that we have now and for the assistance you've given us over the years. And it hasn't gone unnoticed, maybe we were remiss in showing our gratitude in a better way, but we are grateful for it. We are disappointed, to be honest, that we have to move. That's a big undertaking. Lady Iglington's gotten quite comfortable where she is. And do you know about Lady Iglington? What education you're in that? But we are grateful for that. Any help you can give us would be appreciated. And I know there'll be more conversations as we move forward with whatever your decision is. I'm assuming that decision's pretty much been made, but definitely want to hear it from a horse's mouth, no offense. And a worn inappropriate shirt with skulls on it, that was my mistake. And I'm intentional. Thank you all for everything. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else?
I'll say something.
All right, Mr. Mason?
So to push the limit on this a little bit, in the May 2nd, 2024 meeting, there was discussions, actually it was Mr. Noonan yourself, Spencer, said that, you know, fire hall, police, things like that, you should get free utilities. I think that should be revisited. I know it was brought up before, that would help out the Historical Society as well. You guys are ultimately responsible for historical stuff in the, you know, in the community and so forth. So I would recommend revisiting that. I did check into the legalities, obviously Lindsay's not here as usual, so she can check into that stuff, you know, and, you know, obviously it was done before, and I checked out some legalities about it, and I didn't see anything that prohibits. I did call a couple of towns. They, you know, they provide that for their fire department and so forth, which is not understanding why we don't do that. So, and the other thing is, is what money is this town wastes on remodels? I think we did maybe like four or five in the last year or something. I would think that the town could find, I don't know, five, $6,000 laying around somewhere in some budget line items, somewhere out of 2,000 line items to give the Historical Society maybe like four or five grand for remodel or whatever. I mean, I don't speak to them, I'm not a member, but we waste a lot of money. So I figure you guys all have outspoken members of the Historical Society, so it should be a pretty easy decision for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to clarify with you, did you say that we should be providing them with free water and source, is that what you said?
Uh, yeah, because you guys used to do that, according to the May 2nd, 2024 meeting. You guys used to provide the fire department and all that kind of stuff with free water. Churches, by the way, was mentioned in that as well. There were some legality questions before when we brought it up, back when we were doing the water budget sewer stuff, which we don't even want to talk about, so...
Well, we'll shortly check that, I'll turn it in to see what we can do. Anybody else? Amanda?
Amanda Weaver, 501 North Main, you guys know where I live. I am so excited that you guys are having public comment for this decision that you've already made. This is lovely, a beautiful second thought. I'm really excited that you guys are jumping into action to push the Historical Society out, pay all the money to revamp it for the police department. When you had town hall employees work for months to get together the costs of construction in different places and get funders to, if that was to move, to get done for free for the food pantry. I'm really excited to see when you guys do this, so we can talk about how much it's going to cost for the police department to move, where that money's going to come out of the budget, because it's not in there, right? Because you said the, the $8,000 was thrown, cut it. The internet from there, but now we're going to move it there, so all that's going to have to be shifted. I would just like to ask you guys to start having public comment on things before you make the decision. I think that would really just make sense.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? All right, then I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing for the relocation of the Historical Society.
Make a motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the public hearing is now closed. Uh, yeah, you gotta look. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Uh, yeah, you gotta look. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Well, I thought we closed the public hearing, but, all right, yeah. All right, so I will entertain whatever comments the council would like to make related to or questions you want to ask amongst yourselves for the relocation of the Historical Society. Questions among yourselves, or any discussion you want to have about it? So then would someone like to make a motion?
On what?
Would we make a motion? Relocation to keep in the same building, motion?
You guys already made that decision, you answered last week. No, I didn't.
Well, if I could make a motion, then the Historical Society would allow 90 to 120 days.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor for the relocation to give them 90 to 120 days. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that correct? Yes.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
I just want to put to the record that I did not vote, because I was still making mine.
Is there anything under New Business, Council? Public comment, I don't have the sheet.
Yeah, let me help you out.
All right, thank you. Mr. Schaffler?
Yes, sir.
Would you just sign up to talk about it?
I'd do. One moment, I'm sorry. Should have signed further than the sheet. Uh, first question is, the MOU that was discussed earlier with Caroline County, is that a confidential MOU? And if it is, does it have to be, could it be shared with the community so that we can give feedback to the commission? There are people in the community that have some expertise in looking at MOUs and might be of benefit to you.
I would assume, since we have not signed that yet, that it belongs to the counties, though. You'd have to ask that from the county to get a copy of it. That would be my comment. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not 100% sure. But it's, it's not our document yet, it belongs to the county until we sign it, so I would make that request through them.
They did provide it to you, so we can find out.
We can find out.
Jamie, would you guys do that?
Yeah, we can find out.
You know, that's a whole other thing. The 90 to 120 days that you just approved, we appreciate that. 120 days would be about October 5th. I'm kind of stickler for knowing precisely. Motion's can be amended. It would be nice if you amended and just set 120 days with the in-between, because that's where strike happens, when it's between this and between that. So it's my request, if we consider amending that to 120 days flat and make it clear. Then we can, we can count out 120 days or cable, and we'll know what we've got to get done, so that's my request.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, so do we need to make another motion in reference to the 120 days, so it's on the record?
I think that if you want to clarify the motion, we'd have to reintroduce the motion and have a second on that. Clarify whatever you want to clarify, yes.
All right, so I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we will give the Historical Society 120 days.
From today.
From today.
All right, the motion is to clarify the, the motion we made regarding the relocation to, so that they know the date they have to be out, so it's 120 days from today's date. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So the motion's, one extension.
Thank you.
Mr. Mason?
So first off, congratulations to you. I'm sure we'll get to know you a little better. Resumes don't mean much, though, you'll have to prove it. But you did respond to emails, so you're already way ahead of the ballgame, so... I was going to ask a couple of questions, obviously Lindsay's not here, but I do want to point out one thing. Uh, so first off, we have, we have the Roberts Rule and the pass and so forth. I don't want to lose my train of thought here. And of course, I wanted Lindsay to be here, so I could, you know, uh, give her the statutes and so forth. But the Supreme Court did rule that, you know, swearing and things like that is part of public free speech. I know you've threatened to kick me out of here a couple of times, things like that. And obviously, all YouTube videos have documented all the incidences and so forth. So I'm just letting you know here and now that going forward, not only the previous documentation of YouTube videos and so forth, but they will be implemented in lawsuits against the town. Uh, so just so you're aware of that, and I have all the statutes, I've consulted a lawyer, the whole nine yards, and you repeatedly threatened to throw me out. The only way misconduct is disruptive, as long as I'm within my three-minute time period, I'm good to go. And again, it's protective of free speech. So the thing that you read last time is complete BS, so that, that's, that's the main thing. See if I can remember the other thing here. So I did the email that I spoke to about the Town Manager. I emailed you guys back April, I believe it was April 4th, can't remember off the top of my head. It's for open in public election. I'm asking for that out of transparency. The town, obviously, not saying now, but in the past has had a problem with transparency. There were some comments made, one time on a Facebook post from the election board, a member of that election board, which I don't want to name, that has made some public comments about, you know, certain people not getting elected and so forth. And regardless how you feel about somebody or their stance on things, or you just don't like, it's not a popularity contest. It's the best person for the job, if they get voted in, they should be voted. So that's why I'm asking for that, um, out of respect for the new Town Manager. And Lindsay, I went through, initially I was going to file tomorrow. Uh, she told her to give, give her a week to figure it out and give it to you guys, and I got no problem with that, so that's it.
All right, then. Leva, my fault I'm saying everybody, Taylor?
Hello, I'm Leva.
Hello.
I've lived here for about 15 years, and I know most of you, or all of you. I've been quiet, not coming to the podium except for the doll. By the way, six out of seven, she's killing it. But I do want, I have been meaning to come up and bring it up, and the only reason I'm up here is because it exploded all over social media. Um, it's not intended for anybody in particular, or anybody specific. I've been wanting to bring it up for years, but our code enforcement is lackable. Not at Houston now. Uh, like I said, it's been unreliable from the get-go. I myself got a letter a couple of years ago, uh, after my daughter got a brand-new car. And we brought it home on a Friday, um, and, you know, MBAs closed. By Tuesday, it was tagged. I had a letter in my, in my mailbox by Thursday for a car that was already tagged. So I had called and I spoke to the person that was in charge of it then. I was told that it is now allowed and encouraged for citizens to just go around and take pictures and submit it of anything that bothers them, and that they have to send out letters about that kind of stuff. Since then, I've now seen it's on our website for anybody that, you know, has any issues or, um, things that bother them. They could submit pictures. I think this encourages bullying and tattling for people that they don't specifically like. But it also brings up the problem that we do have, I mean, everybody's worried about 10 inches of grass. I lived directly next to three areas that is cut by the town. It reaches over 10 inches all the time. We get rain. Then you can't cut it. Then by the time somebody has a chance, it's up to your knees. Things happen. Everybody's really obsessed with grass. I didn't think I moved into an HOA. I understand we want Greensboro to look nice. We have cars that are parked in people's backyards, seven, 10 deep, covered with a tarp, because that's what they told everybody to do. Cover it with a tarp, and then if we don't see it, we're not going to, we're not going to regulate and get you for that. Everything's covered with a tarp. We have houses with doors that get left open, and there's literally trash pouring out into their yard and living room furniture that is on porches. If you're worried about us looking good, let's handle that stuff, and we can handle the grass later. You know, 65 regulations to protect the grass. I mean, and, and, I mean, it seems extreme, I get it. Well, let's get the furniture out, the, the, the tow yards out, the backyards, and the tarps covering everything, because somehow that became the answer. So that, and I'm only bringing it up because it became a blow-up on social media for like attacking people and stuff, which was unnecessary, but I would just like to see it be more regulated all across the board.
All right, thank you. Our motion?
I, I already spoke on behalf of the Historical Society, thank you.
Kim Ryan?
Hello, I just wanted to clarify, I believe it was during the Public Works Workshop Budget meeting. I tried to listen to it today, but work got annoyed. There was an increase of 12 and a half percent, I believe, in the overall budget. But I thought, if memory serves me correctly, there was a conversation about grants for the road, roads, fixing the roads. But then I think during the last meeting, when Amanda questioned it, it was said that the budget was increased for road repairs. So I'm just a little confused as to if there were grants or if there was money added to the budget for road repairs, which, which it was.
Are you talking, are you talking about the highway user funds?
I'm not sure what it was called, I just...
Yeah, so they had $8,000 extra in their revenue because of the highway user funds.
And what are they, specifically?
From State of Maryland that gives each town some money to try to fix some roads.
Okay, so then the increase in the budget was what, money that the town's going to put out? to repair roads in addition, or no? Or am I just completely off base?
That's more of revenue that comes in for Public Works, am I correct, Brandon?
Yes, that's more revenue. And just to clarify, it's, it's thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
But that, that's not only just for road repairs, that's for, so if we have a water leak, then it repairs the water leak, and then the infrastructure on top of the road service.
And then I do have a question, maybe the county lady probably could answer it, but I do live right on the river, and we have a little bit of problem with erosion as well. Who is the, so would it be up to the homeowner to contact somebody for a grant to, to fix erosion issues?
Yeah, I would assume so, yeah.
Okay, all right, I wasn't sure how you go about that. If it's like whoever owns the river, or whoever owns the property, or how, how that all flows?
Some people want to mainstream.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you. Mayor Weaver?
Well, friends, I know you guys all saw that post on Facebook about the consequences of an employee's actions. I'm just curious about how the council's going to move forward with confidential documents needing released to the public. And you can answer me, because you answered Ken, and you've answered Mr. Bill, so we can't pick and choose. What's the plan moving forward? How do we decide?
I don't think the council or the town releases confidential documents.
What are you going to do because it is released? How are you going to protect your employees?
That's a question we'd have to ask our attorney.
Why isn't the attorney here?
Because she has another commitment tonight.
Right, she's not here a lot. Is there a plan moving forward? When we have an attorney, okay, so I know that when the town has to do different contracts, you have to set it out for bid. Why isn't that happening with the attorney? Does she just like write that off the contract?
I guess it's something to look into.
I would love to, but we're going to put that out to bid. Because she's got like, what, nine, seven, nine of the towns?
Seven.
Seven. Are you guys satisfied with the work that she does? Because like, Leva and Taylor, I believe, just brought up about the code enforcement. We don't get anybody code fighting for that kind of stuff.
I guess it's something to look into. We have new town manager, maybe that's something we'll have to address.
Okay, and will you guys be launching an investigation into how the confidential documents got released?
That's easy, I share it.
I know, but I...
Case closed.
You didn't have it originally, be quiet, it's not for three minutes. But we, we're only going to answer what we want to answer.
I don't know that a decision has been made.
What did you think? Do you think that...
I'm not going to tell you what I think, it's up to the council to decide. Not my decision, man.
Council made a decision for Mr. Bill to have a vote. Are we going back to that?
You're asking for a special personnel matter, so that'll be discussed for executive session. We're not going to discuss any personnel matters.
You can't discuss whether or not you guys are going to investigate how confidential documents got released?
Well, until we have the executive session, we're actually made aware of all that, what actually occurred there. There's no way we can, it would be an underperformance.
We would certainly like to know how that found out, yes.
And, and just for the record, I don't know what time that you're talking about. I haven't just heard a session, I don't, so I'm more than likely to do it.
Well, welcome.
Hi, I'm like...
Hey, Lindsey, I have, I have questions for you.
I've got eighteen seconds.
I've got eighteen seconds. Are you guys going to look into how that paperwork got released on Facebook? What did who released it? To protect, to protect your employees?
No, to figure out who released confidential personnel information.
Got no name on it.
I, I don't know. Thank you.
I'll give you a copy of it.
All right, so that's the end of public comment. Council, what else? You might have anything to say?
No.
The second?
I just want to thank Jamie and Dawn and Brandon and all, even my, to everybody for filling in that time until we hire a new town manager and hopefully Cindy will, she'll knock it out of the park, so, that's all.
Thanks.
As we're moving into the summer, just want us to make sure we're looking out for the kids. The summer, they, they have two more weeks of school left. Please slow down on the roads, there's a school left, and there's a lot of kids down that way. So just be, be mindful around over, overpart as we go onto something, the kids are out. That's it for me, and also again, thank you so much for having me.
I just want to thank everybody for speaking up. And we all sit around and all listen to everybody, but just thank you for stepping up and speaking up. I really appreciate it.
All right, so I will look for a motion to close this meeting for the time being and go into executive session to get legally votes. I'm sorry? The only thing I have left on here is to remind the public that we will not be meeting on June the nineteenth because it's a holiday. Thank you for reminding me of that. So I still be looking for that motion to adjourn the regular meeting, go to executive session, obtain legally votes.
I'll make the motion to adjourn the regular meeting and go into a term of suspension.
In a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.